Good. We'll go ahead and start the Select Board meeting for April 6, 2020. I'm really devastated to announce that John Parent died this morning. He passed away. He was a member of the Select Board previously. He was a member of the Budget Committee. He was the business person. He was served in the United States Marine Corps. I just always recall him as just such a nice gentleman and such an asset to us and a very hard worker on a whole host of issues. He also, every year, coordinated the town pickup day in the spring. So I'd like to start with a moment of silence, but I don't want to just speak alone about John. So if somebody else wants to add after the moment of silence, I'm really welcome that. So a moment of silence, please, in memory of John Parent. So thank you for your reflections. Anybody want to add anything?
John was also on the Rogue Committee for a long, long time.
You're correct.
A very good friend, ran with me. No one else would. Came to my rescue. A great man.
He was all around a great guy. Going to be missed.
Great. And of course, we were able to give him the Spirit of America Award last year, so I'm glad that we did that. And again, very sad to announce that John Parent has passed away today. We'll move on to the minutes of the Select Board meeting for March 16, 2020. These were emailed out this afternoon. I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to review them. I did not give them a close review. Did anybody review them to the degree that they feel like you can just make a motion in regards to it?
I did not.
We'll again table that. So it'll be in the next packet along with the meetings from last Monday night. And so we'll have several of these go through fourth. They certainly can be posted on the website. They can be posted on the website as unapproved. Right, Eric?
Yeah, they're up on the website now. They do say draft on them, so.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to closely go over them, so.
That's okay. It was later in the afternoon when they came through, so I think.
That's quite all right. So we'll go on to Select Board Communications. Any members of the Select Board that would like to communicate anything to the rest of the board?
Well, we're not going to have a community pickup like John had organized in the past just because of the coronavirus. So I recommend everybody clean up their street. I've done P-rigs several times. And that way, we don't keep the streets clean until next year.
Yeah. I think it's a very good idea. And we might even want to post something that we would, as the community, all try to do that this spring and maybe even maintain a little list of roads and what families did them or something of that nature. I'll chat further with Eric about maybe we can just set up a page where somebody can send in a note or something.
Yeah, I think we had something similar last year. A spreadsheet with who is assigned what. And so, yeah, absolutely, we can do that again. And, yeah.
Well, it was always a good idea to do that. I mean, we never failed to have plenty to bring in.
I think it was four years that we did it. And I did the sheets for it last year, so I'll get those out and send them to you, Eric.
Great.
Excellent. The logistics of that basically community-wide pickup without an organizational hub, given our transfer station limited access, might be something we need to think about in terms of how people that are doing this coordinate their deliveries to the transfer station.
Yeah, my recommendation on that, we can all give some guidances to perhaps just pick up a bag of it, if you can, on the road that you're on. Put it in with your own household trash and bring it in on the day you normally bring it in. Or, you know, you could bring it in that day on a second trip or something. But I think it's a good idea that we just don't have somebody bringing in a pickup truck with 80 bags in it. That's not what we want.
No.
Right.
So, okay. Anybody else? We'll move on to staff reports. Hi, Eric.
Hi. Not too much. Just a quick update on the coronavirus situation. We did receive today our designation as an essential business, which I think is important for us in communicating to the public, you know, why we're continuing to operate and the importance of what we're doing. Also gives the staff an opportunity to have something they do, you know, get stopped at all on the way into the office or back, which I think is very unlikely, but trouble restrictions may still come. I think it was good to be prepared for that. Also, the.
Eric, when you move your head to your right, we hear you better.
Okay.
So, and we love the profile, too. Why don't you go ahead and give that number in case anybody wants to make a public communication right after your report?
Anybody that would like to communicate with the Select Board can call 242-5437. That's a 207 number. And we'll put you on speakerphone and get you through.
I came through really clear, by the way.
All right.
So do proceed with your report after my interruption.
All right. So just a quick update on the coronavirus. I did attend virtually, of course, a meeting today for the, I guess it's with the Maine CDC, but they give a weekly update on Mondays. And their assessment of the situation is that we're continuing to have growing cases in Maine. They do not expect things to flatten off for a while, at least the next week, if not longer. And so they are urging people to continue to be diligent. And also, they had a discussion about the cloth masks and, you know, when and where they're most appropriate and some of the cautions around using them that I thought were pretty important. And it is worth noting that if you have one, you want to avoid touching your face, even though it's going to be an irritation. The more you touch that and fiddle around, the more likely you are to contaminate yourself or contaminate somebody else defeating the purpose of the mask. So if people are wearing masks, if it's used properly, it can be an effective tool to help minimize risk. But there was some caution around making sure you had a good tight fit and also not touching your face excessively. So that was some good guidance from the CDC.
Eric.
Also, yeah.
I watched that news conference, maybe not the same one you were on, but with Narav Shah this morning. And he made a point of saying that the masks are really only effective for people who have the virus. You may not know you have it, but it keeps what's coming out of your mouth reaching other people. It really doesn't do anything for you breathing things in from other people. The most important thing is just to stay away from people.
Another key point was social distancing. Masks are not a substitute for staying six feet apart and in open spaces if possible.
Right.
So, yes. Yeah, no, thank you. That's a great addition. And they've been doing multiple conferences each day, so they're doing their part. And I do want to thank our staff and volunteers for doing their part to help in this situation. We've had a great response from a number of community volunteers and also town staff. We have Melissa Small from our librarian working to support volunteer coordination as well as Kristen Parks coordinating with her to get the word out and really build on that volunteer effort that was started earlier, I guess, this late last month. And so they've made great progress, and I expect we'll see more good things from them. They're coordinating with Senator Sean Vallos and her efforts now in the community. So we're really branching out and getting that network that is most effective in helping people and reaching into the corners of our community. So I think they're doing a great job. And I just wanted to thank them and all the town staff for continuing to be present and vigilant as we're working through this. So that's my summary of my report. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for Eric?
I have one. Ralph mentioned that we have reduced access at the transfer station. Have we changed our hours? Or is it just that we are being distanced while we're there?
We are being distanced while we're there. We've actually added hours, which is another key point. I'm not sure if I was set up for that or not, but we do have senior hours now at the transfer station Thursdays from 10 to 2. So when anybody over age 65 or really anybody that has an underlying health condition that they think is worth, you know, paying attention to and keeping separate from other people, Thursday hours could be a great opportunity to get out to the transfer station and not have quite so much volume. I was there on Saturday in the afternoon, and there were two cars in front of me. So it really wasn't too bad. People are being good about spreading out. But we do have one change at the transfer station right now. We are actually not accepting plastic film. We went back and forth on that a little bit, but in the end, the staff having to reach their hands into a barrel and push down the plastic because of the low-density nature of it just wasn't something that they were interested in. And I certainly appreciate their concern. So we're not taking plastic film. It can either be thrown in with a regular waste, or you can save it. It does pack well in your own home, and we can take it in a month or so when we get back to normal operation.
That's like the pellet bags and that stuff, Eric?
Yeah, pellet bags, the Hennepin shopping bags that we're now all forced to use unless you bag our own groceries.
Oh, no. How the senior hours are working at this point? Is it well subscribed?
I don't know how well subscribed it is. I know that the people are coming through. We had several last Thursday. I don't know how many exactly. But Karen had said that everybody was very grateful to have the opportunity to separate from the general public. So I thought if it helps one person, it's worth it. But, yeah, we are cutting a little bit into the contractor hours, but they're there so infrequently during that full day anyway that it really isn't much of an impact, so.
Eric, what have we done to get the word out to Wayne and Fayette about that?
I sent an email directly to the both town managers on the day we did it.
And thank you. And do we know if they have a, like, a citizens' email alert like we do, where people can sign up?
I don't think so. I think Aaron and Wayne may have something, but we don't have a lot with them. I don't know exactly what their capacity is, I guess I should say.
Okay.
Okay. Are you all set?
I think so.
Eric?
One other thing I want to note is that I am working with Lee to purchase some N95 masks for the town, the fire department, and perhaps for residents. We're going to be spending a few thousand dollars on them because it's a thousand unit minimum. However, it seems like a good investment at this time, especially not knowing where this is going to lead. Also noting that very likely we'll have 75% or more reimbursement from the federal government for that purchase once everything clears. So I want to thank Lee for his efforts in all this, too. I forgot to mention Lee. He's doing a great job working to prepare the fire department, working with EMS service, and just doing his job very well. One last note on the EMS. I did speak with Chief Davinsky from the Woods of Angleton Service last week, and we do not have an ambulance currently stationed in Reedfield. We do still have service with the ambulance service. They've just drawn into their station in Winthrop to keep themselves safe and also not contaminate our station with the very likely issues they might bring with them after a call. So they have prepared a number of their ambulances with heavy plastic film and other preparations to deal with coronavirus patients. So they're doing their part, but unfortunately, that means that we don't have a stationed ambulance in Reedfield at the moment. And we're hoping to work with them to get that changed as soon as possible. But outside of them sitting in the parking lot for a few hours at a time, it's probably not going to happen anytime in the next few weeks.
And Eric, I didn't catch how much you said the case of 1,000 masks would be?
I think it's going to be around 3,200, something like that.
And do you need any authorization from us for that?
It's less than $5,000, and I figured you'd be cool with it, so. I'm good.
I was just going to make sure we authorized it if you needed it.
We're all set, then. Are you all set, Eric?
I am. Thank you.
Okay, great. Were there any members of the public who wanted to address us that are either on Zoom or might call in? Okay, great. We'll move on to old business. And the old business is to go ahead and give our recommendations on the warrant. Did everyone have a chance to go over the warrant pretty thoroughly or to the degree that they would like? What I'm going to do, first of all, you know, I sound checked everybody else, so I'm all set. How am I coming through?
Loud and clear.
Okay, great. So I'm going to do what I've done in the past, is I gang these into groups, and I'll tell you what the heading is and which articles are being covered, and we'll vote on that group. On some of these, we'll be voting that that's the language we want to submit for the warrant. On others, we will be voting to actually make a recommendation, a yes or no recommendation on an article. I've tried to group these in ways that make sense. They may not, in your view. And what we'll do is when I introduce a group of them to discuss, if there's one you want pulled out to be discussed separately, we'll just, you know, I'll just defer to you on that. If you say pull out number whatever, I have questions on that one. I'd like to address them. I have tried to anticipate a couple of those, so a couple of them are already pulled out. Is everybody comfortable with that procedure? It's what we've done in the past. I'm not sure. Probably Ralph actually observed it last year.
I did.
Yes, yeah. So is everybody comfortable with that? We've been through the budget, and I think we've pretty much asked all the major questions and so on and so forth in terms of the budget itself. This is how it fits into the warrant to be presented to voters. So I'll begin with Article 1 and 2, which are elections. And these two articles basically form the elections of a moderator and of the various officers that would be elected. And so this is just the submission for wording.
Hello. Hi. I just want to ask Eric, I'm bringing this into you tomorrow. Is that, does that jive?
This being?
My, the candidates have until the 10th, right?
Oh, your nomination papers.
Yes.
That's perfect.
What time, are the regular office hours tomorrow?
Regular office hours, by appointment only, so you're going to call ahead.
I will call ahead.
We're knocking my window.
I will. I'll throw a snowball. Thank you.
Yep. And typically, we don't necessarily put the names here because we're typically doing it ahead of time. So is this the way you want it presented on the ballot and can have a motion to that effect?
I'd make a motion to put Article 1 and 2 on the warrant as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Because we're in a virtual meeting, I will be doing these by rolls. And that's another reason I tried to roll these up into groups. So Eno?
Yes.
He has raised his hand. Okay, Salmon?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going. Yes. Okay, so now we'll go on to the next set of articles, which I've put together, 3 through 6. And I've just kind of considered those operational. They're setting salaries and wages, when we collect taxes, our interest rate, and what we do if an article fails. So that's, again, these are probably exact language that's appeared for a whole number of years. But we would approve the wording of them, essentially.
I'll make a motion to approve Articles 3, 4, 5, and 6 as presented to be placed on the warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Salmon?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going. Yes. And then Articles 7 through 8. These are expenditures, so they're expenditures on a whole array of items. Again, we've reviewed all of these in the budget. Is there any article you want pulled out for particular discussion before we go through 7 through 10? Can I have a motion?
No, but I, sorry, I'll make a motion. But I'd just like to say that I went through the entire warrant and realized that, once the Budget Committee met last week, all of these numbers have been adjusted for the draft that Eric had given us last week, and they all match perfectly.
The ones we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you for that edification.
And I'll make a motion to approve Articles 7 and 8 to be placed on the warrant, each with a Select Board recommends. Is it yes or ought to pass?
What I'm actually, I think what we ought to do is on, did you want to pull out 9 and 10?
Oh, I thought you just said 7 and 8.
If I did, then I misspoke. I meant 7 through 10.
So no one seconded. So I'll make a motion to approve Articles 7, 8, 9, and 10 to be placed on the warrant, each with a recommendation of ought to pass.
And is there a second?
Second.
I seconded.
Okay. There's a tie for a second. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Salmon?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going. Yes. Question 11, and I pulled this one out as an individual question because this is a wording basically about the town beach. And this is really a sense of the community question. So it's not, it's either expenditure nor revenue, but it would affect how we plan in our years. Could I have a motion in regards to question 11, which we're not going to recommend a yea or an a on it, but we want to approve the wording of it?
I'll make a motion to take Article 11 as presented and place it on the warrant.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on 11? Seeing none, Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Salmon?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going, yes. Articles 7 through 16 are also expenditures.
12?
And 12 through 16. What did I say?
7.
7.
Yeah, that's pretty bad, huh? 12 through 16 are expenditures on various items and the section departments in there, roads and drainage summatories, and capital improvements and solid waste.
I'll make a motion to approve Articles 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 as presented with a Select Board recommendation of ought to pass.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that language for 12 and 12 through 16 with a Select Board recommendation of ought to pass. Is there any discussion on the motion? Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Salmon?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going, yes. Articles 17 and 18 are either agreements or the county tax. So these are basically standing commitments. First Park, Cobsey Watershed forming Article 17 and the Cannaback County Tax Assessment, which is Article 18.
I'll make a motion to approve, to place Articles 17 and 18 as written on the warrant with a Select Board recommendation of ought to pass.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve these two articles as presented with an ought-to-pass recommendation. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just one question about the county tax. I'm assuming that's an estimate because they don't have a firm number yet?
That's correct.
Yeah. So when would that number firm, Eric?
At this point, I don't know. I don't know where they are in their budget process. Usually, we have it in May. But right now, I don't believe we have a firm number from them. Or I shouldn't say I don't believe. I don't know where they are, how they're going to finish up their process given the current circumstances. I'm sure they will, but I don't know what their, don't know what their timeframe is.
So can we have this amount in there? And then if we need to adjust it at a later point, we can do that even if it's not until July or August?
I mean, we have to pay what, if it's more, we have to find a way to find the money. If it's less, we would need to just spend less. So the authorization is really an up to amount. So, and it's a budget, so we wouldn't be able to adjust the warrant article. But we can adjust what we spend.
When is the warrant final date? The actual print date on it?
The print date would be, well, I mean, tonight, basically. Once you approve these articles, they are firm unless you need again to change them.
Well, the Budget Committee is still going to give their recommendations, right?
They will give their recommendations, yes. But the final, the actual form of the warrant and the numbers that are in it are the Select Board, your ultimate.
So let me understand, for the purposes of discussion, the 293,962 is our best estimate of where the county will be. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a 5% increase over last year.
It's not a yes. It's not a, it's not a given number from them.
No, it's not.
And it's not just merely putting in last year or so without an assumption of a normal increase either. So if it was $3,000 difference, then we would have to figure that out later. This is what we would approve at town meeting.
That's right.
So that's the caveat on this vote, so.
We would pay it out of contingency, I would imagine.
Yeah, there's a number of options, but contingency would be one of the first ones I would look at. And, you know, I surely hope it's last. Maybe it's only 4%. In the past couple of years, it's been 2%. So I feel 5 is healthy, but we'll see.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. So we have 17 and 18. We do have the motion on the floor. So I think with the further edification from that discussion, we know what we're voting on. Is there any further discussion on 17 and 18's presentation with a Select Board recommendation of yes? Seeing none, Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Salmon?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going as a yes. Articles 19 and 20 are basically commitments for debt service and a commitment for our local tax relief budget category. But I have a motion in regards to those.
I'll make a motion to present Articles 19 and 20 as written with a Select Board recommendation of ought to pass.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded on 17 and, oh, excuse me, 19 and 20. Better pay attention to what I'm doing here, right?
Well, it is recorded, so you're all set.
Yeah, I know. We want to make sure the recording's right the first time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Salmon?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going as a yes. Articles 21 through 28 are support services, supporting services, if you will, and agencies. And so these contain a number of items that have appeared every year on the ballot. Cannaback Behavioral Health, through the 30 Mile River Association, and how we dedicate some money to the snowmobile club, for example. And of course, I've only mentioned three out of the seven or so that I noted. Was there any that were new this year, Eric? These are all, I believe.
These are all standard. There's no new, some small amount changes, but no new entities.
Yep. Okay, can I have a motion in regards to Articles 21 through 28?
I'll make a motion to approve Articles 21 through 28 as presented with a Select Board recommendation of ought to pass.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to present these on the warrant for vote with a Select Board recommendation of ought to pass. Is there any discussion on this group of articles?
I have one thing. This is a Greg Durigan comment. Eric, after Article 18, you have to. Eric, at the, after Article 25, could we have another line inserted after the Budget Committee recommends?
Absolutely, yeah, this will look different on the bubble sheet anyway, but yes, absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you.
Good catch. We'll call the roll then, Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going, yes. 29 through 31, I've just kind of called this group set-asides. This is what we would bring out of the unclassified budget, what we would put to general assistance, and our ability to authorize expenditure of revenues from federal, state, and private sources for purposes of which a grant is intended. May I have a motion on those?
I'll make a motion to approve Article 29 and 30 as presented to place on the warrant with the Select Board recommendation of ought to pass.
Would you include 31 in that, or did you want to pull?
Oh, and 31.
Okay, great.
30 and 31.
Thank you.
Second.
Second? Okay, is there any discussion on those three?
I guess I'd just like to state for the record that we did increase the category for abatements and for general assistance over what it had been previously due to the current situation of the coronavirus.
Correct, so that consideration has been made within this budget. I'll proceed with the roll call unless it's for the discussion. Seeing none, Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going as yes. We'll go on to 32 through 35, which are revenues. And so 32 through 35 give particular detail in at least a couple of these as to where revenues come from, either estimated revenues or designated funds, and so forth. Could I have a recommendation or a motion in regards to 32 to 35?
I'll make a motion that we accept Articles 32, 33, 34, 30, and 35 as presented to be placed on the warrant with a recommendation from the Select Board of ought to pass.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to place 32 through 35 as presented with an ought-to-pass recommendation from the Select Board. Is there any discussion on these items? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the roll call, Eno?
Yes, with the caveat that my internet connection is becoming unstable, so I may be here and I may be not.
You're perfect right now, okay, great. Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going, yes, oh, how about that? I'm looking around for them, you know? Okay. We'll move on to Article 36, which is the town, asking the town to allow the Select Board to make emergency expenditure reductions and a possible transfer up to a certain level from the undesignated fund balance pursuant to meet revenue shortfalls because of the coronavirus. So I pulled that one out individually, it's generated a lot of discussion in the Budget Committee. We do have one Budget Committee member who is at least listening in, and if she would like to comment as we go through this discussion, she'd be very welcome to do that, or anybody else that might want to call in on that. So we have this article, I'm not sure, did everybody take a look at the emails that came around late this afternoon, or mid-afternoon? Okay. What's that?
I did not.
Okay, well, I would sum it up as saying that the, and I guess I would defer to some others on this to some extent to make sure I captured. The Budget Committee did not think this article was a good idea, and they've not voted on these, on this particular article, but I would assume they would turn in a no vote. And they have their reasons, particularly around the general fund expenditure, and so that's kind of where we're at at that. I'd like other members to add in their thoughts in regards to this.
I don't see anything on my email that came through about this.
I didn't get any either, was it just between you and them?
I don't believe it was, but it could have been. There were two items that I received. One was the Budget Committee meeting minutes. Did that go to everybody, no?
No, so I just sent those to you because they were unapproved draft, and the email from Marty, I did ask if he felt comfortable sharing that with the board, but I didn't get a response, so I had forwarded that just to you for your reference.
Okay.
Discussing the situation broadly, so it was just shared with you, just out of, I guess, respect for the committee in the way this stuff was presented to me, so.
Okay, so I did not attend that meeting, and I've read their unapproved minutes, and I can't, I mean, I could share those if people wanted to read them from my desktop, I suppose, but I don't know if we want to necessarily do that, or perhaps, Eric, you can characterize what the concerns were, and then we can all speak to that.
Yeah, I think that's probably a simpler way to do it, because there really were only a few concerns, although they were.
May I interrupt first on one other item? I was very heartened to see from that discussion, and this is a complete aside from the one we're discussing of where the school budget is going. They're already down below 3.5%.
Yay!
Yeah, so we're really going in a direction that I had hoped would be accomplished. So with that, let's get back on to 36.
Sure, yeah, so there were a few perspectives on this that affected how people felt about that article, in my view, anyway, that they were strongly felt. The three concerns that I really saw coming out of the meeting were.
Could you lean forward?
What's that?
Could you lean forward? You started to lean back, and I couldn't hear you, yes.
Okay, so the first concern was the use of the fund balance, the undesignated fund balance. We're right on the edge, we're actually just a little bit under, I think we're at 97% of our policy guidance right now with the current draft budget. Again, that's got two years of speculation in it, that, you know, if I wanted to, I could say, well, it looks a little bit rosier in F122, and maybe it'll be up to a zero balance, but, or a zero difference over the 212s or under the 212s. But the concern was that we're already very close to that edge, and that by spending more, or up to 25%, which would be something like $270,000, there was concern that that would overly affect, or more significantly affect, the fund balance than we would like to do, or at least more than the Budget Committee thought they would like to see. That was one of the primary concerns. Other concerns were, arose around just the precedent that might be set by delegating that much authority, or the concern that some residents may have around that act of delegation to begin with, the fact that in the past, we've had pretty negative outcomes when it comes to giving boards, Select Board authority, and there was concern that that might affect either people's perspectives of that article to begin with, causing a no vote, or possibly even causing them to be fairly upset and just put down the whole budget. I do think that's a bit unlikely. I jokingly said that this is Article 36, they could have to erase a lot of bubbles to do that, but the truth of the matter is that I think that there was a concern about how the public might react to an article that gave wide spending authority to the Select Board, even if it was in a certain frame of the 25% maximum and only related to the coronavirus. I think that was really the general gist of it, those three kind of points. Don't think there's much else that came out of that meeting, really. It was a very deliberative meeting, they went around for probably half an hour on it and talked about it, but the longer they talked, the less enchanted they were with the idea of putting the article forward.
Was there, was there, was there a sense of what an alternative might be, should we get between that proverbial rock and a hard place and need to act before you could actually put a town meeting together?
That was, I kind of observed from the minutes that actually, we can do anything up to, we can stop spending anytime we want. We don't need necessarily an authorization to cancel a project, for example, or to make an across-the-board reduction in line items. So the sticking point of authority, I think, was the undesignated fund balance. If I would characterize the, except going to a town meeting, so we would make our choices essentially through the expense pathway first, and then if we felt we needed to make that transfer, we would go to town meeting.
Which is actually just a one-way option, because you have no flexibility in terms of preserving line items and spending, should that actually be desirable. The only option if this does not happen, or some modification of it does not happen, is cut. Correct?
Well, I'm going to characterize this warrant article, and then I'm going to recognize Dennis in one way that I see it, and that is, it's all basically, it doesn't authorize new spending, okay? We have collected the money that exists in the unassigned fund. So it's a matter of making, in essence, we operate under basically a balanced budget, and so it's balancing our budget at a lower level. I'm going to characterize later my feeling about how much we would use of that 25% and why, just so in discussion, at least, it's noted what my feeling is on that amount, but I'm going to let Dennis speak first.
Thank you. I have two questions.
Thank you.
Is the purpose of this article for us to use that fund balance as a way to cover projects we are already committed to, to ensure that they are finished during the coronavirus? Or is it meant to pay for things for the coronavirus out of the general fund?
It's really not meant necessarily to pay for things out of the general fund for the coronavirus, and I hope that the order that I wrote the article in, to say basically, to make emergency expenditure reductions, and if necessary, transfers from the unassigned balance, it would allow us to, yes, perhaps not cancel a project, and move forward with balancing the budget, if you will, at a different level. Did I answer your question correctly? I mean, not correctly, but.
Yes, I just want to follow up. So what is the purpose of the article? And is the article meant so that we can cover our financial butts if coronavirus sucks money from us?
Yeah, I think the main thing, the purpose of my writing this article, my drive, intended drive, was to address a revenue shortfall, not.
Based on coronavirus?
Well, yeah, if the state economy goes to hell, we may, let's, for, let's take that the second revenue sharing from the state of Maine, they decide it's going to be a 90% reduction. At that point, we're in a situation that we would need to make a move, whether it would be with this article, by the way, or a town meeting, I mean, both of those approaches are the way to do it. But that was my intention, was to primarily address an unknown revenue shortfall. And as we said at the joint meeting, probably whatever we're saying in this budget, there's something big that's going to be wrong.
Can I say something?
Sure.
If we have to have a special town meeting, we're not going to get the representation that we're going to get on this secret ballot. People aren't going to all come to the meeting, you're not going to get as many voters.
Well, I have a little bit of a different feeling on this article in terms of a concern that it might place the budget itself as a whole in jeopardy, because it's giving this power, if you will, to the Select Board to make a change to it. To me, I think, and again, this is solely my opinion, I think this represents saying there is a known bull in the china shop, and that bull's name is coronavirus, and we recognize that, and so with a budget that we've made some adjustment in, okay? We haven't made a dramatic, huge adjustment in, but a budget that goes forward in a normal year with some adjustment in it, because we know kind of some circumstances, with some items that we want to make sure we consider in regards to coronavirus, that we also want to deal with the unknown. Dennis?
So, so then, Bruce, what you're, so I'm just trying to understand the conflict between what our intent is and why the Budget Committee doesn't like it, and I need to, I guess that's, so to me, it's one of those things where we are looking at a preemptive strike so that we can be more flexible and malleable depending on what happens, and the argument is, we're, the opposite argument is, we're overextending ourselves? Is that the summation for?
I'm not, I'm not going to characterize the Budget Committee as saying that we're overextending ourselves. I think they're trying to take a very balanced look at what our policy is on holding money in the unassigned fund, and basically, you know, operations in town in terms of how we proceeded in the past, and perhaps dealing with this more directly with a town meeting than this particular article. Now, I will, I do want, and I will recognize Ralph right after I finish speaking, and I'm saying, I'm giving people, I'm recognizing people as we go around here just to try to coordinate the discussion as much as possible, and since it's in a virtual environment, it's a little bit less free. The, I don't want to, I don't want to harm the undesignated fund balance. My goal is not to say, wow, I have my hands on this big, huge pot of money, let's spend it, or whatever, that's, and I don't think the Budget Committee thinks that. There is some concern about jeopardizing credit ratings and things like that. This, this article's usage, in my mind, again, and I can only speak for me, doesn't occur in a vacuum. We would be discussing this at Select Board meetings, we would be saying, we're going to make this move, this is why we need to make it. And quite frankly, if we felt that drawing that undesignated fund, it authorizes up to 25%, below 10% or 12% or some other number was the danger line that we didn't want to cross, we go to town meeting if we want to. We can, we can pull the trigger in a town meeting without even going to the assigned fund balance. So I only see that as sort of a, a second dose of medicine that perhaps we can use. And, you know, my intent is not to use it liberally in any way, shape, or form. Ralph, you're next.
I do share the Budget Committee's concern about maximizing the percentage should the need arise in terms of reducing the undesignated fund balance beyond a level which we probably should not go. That said, I do believe that, given the times we are in and the unpredictability of this whole situation, is that it would be prudent for the town to have this flexibility so that you don't hamstring day-to-day budget operations, which. so that you don't hamstring day-to-day budget operations, which is, I think, the intent of what this was all about to begin with. As a way around this to ameliorate budget committee concerns, perhaps the language could be amended so that any action that enables this of this warrant to become reality is, is uh, is a function of both boards approving or a recommendation of the budget committee to allow the, the select board to do it. So that everybody has a bite of the proverbial apple, so to speak. And that may be a way around their concerns, which I think are entirely legitimate.
Catherine?
Well, not to be the spoil sport, but I think, I'm not sure how long this has been a policy of the select board. I know it used to be at a different percentage, but I remember about 12 years ago when I was first on the board. This fund had been rated to levels quite a bit below the recommendation over the, over time. And so we redid the article so that, not the article, we redid the policy so that it would be more apparent to everybody that it, there's an expectation that it stays at this level. And the, the primary reason for this isn't so we just have extra money, but it's so that we don't have to go into borrowing money to pay our bills because our, our funds come in not on a particularly regular basis. We get the primary bulk of our money through two tax payments, once in the fall and once in the spring. And then we have to manage that money so that we have enough in our checking account to pay our bills as they come due. The, the bottom line is, this is a select board policy and we don't need to go to change the amount that we spend. We can go ahead and read, and spend out of that undesigned fund without anybody's permission because it's a policy. I think what we're trying to do here is to say, we want to honor the policy rather than rewriting it or just spending it down. And we're trying to be very upfront about it. Um, I'm not sure that it's a good idea for us to just spend over what our recommendation is, but we, we will not have our hands tied if this does not pass, nor if we don't even present it at all. So in an emergency situation, we could make a case through public meetings and much discussion about the need to do that. Now, will that upset people in town and cause an uproar and, and lead people to not believe that we're doing things in the best interests of the town? Well, that's as much speculation as, well, we need to do anything. Um, so I, I'm torn. Whether to include this or not, because I know that we can change what we do um, legally. Um, so we are not bound to going for a, a special town meeting. I also think personally, I would be happier with us putting off a couple of our rather large expenditures until spring of next year, rather than maybe doing them in the fall of this year, so that we can wait and see how things play out. And then if we just don't do a couple of large expense items because we did not get in the funds that we were expecting, we won't really have an issue.
Yeah, I think this entire board's approach is to be conservative next year and our moves and be very prudent as we go along. And so um, the purpose of this article is to enhance the toolbox. Other members of the board, Ralph?
Well, I've come full circle again. It's uh, to, to echo your sentiments, Bruce, it's a management tool. It doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to be pulling the trigger on it. Uh, but we just have no idea what's coming down the pike, so to speak. And in terms of being able to function in a timely fashion and a responsible fiscal fashion, it makes sense to me to have this option there as long as we have a buy-in on the part of, of all of the, all of the management or management bodies in the town, budget committee, select board, uh, to, to realize and acknowledge the fact that this isn't something we're going to just use because it's there. It is there uh, to uh, to keep the town whole, to keep its best management practices in place uh, should all other options fall through. Uh, and to not have it and then backtrack and saying, we need to do this at a later point in time. As Chris pointed out, if you go to a town meeting, I'm not sure you get a representative vote, representative vote at that point in time. And the best, the best option from my perspective to get a true uh, true gauge of the public sentiment is to do it when you're going to have the most voters turn out.
Well, and, and if we do need to go to a town meeting, it would be a floor meeting because we would be talking about this in an emergency basis. Wouldn't be printing 60-day notices and um, all of, all of that. We can go to a town meeting fairly quickly if it's a floor meeting. Um, the.
I have a brief question, Bruce. If we went to a floor meeting, um, this is more back to what Dennis was saying. If we did go to an on-the-floor meeting, what would we be actually asking the towns' voters to approve for us?
Well, I think if we went to a town meet, meeting, it would be, it would be primarily because we would want to move money from the um, undesigned fund balance because I think everything else is, is authorized. And so we would be saying, we have this much money. Um, it's, you know, we try to keep two-twölths of a of the money uh, of that fund uh, in a fluid um, um, available on a fluid basis. And um, we, who knows what we, we may have a 50,000 more than that. And we wanna move it to address um, uh, the shortfall in revenue because of revenue sharing or, or whatever. Um, so I, I, I think that's how, that's what we would be primarily doing. Again, you know, besides the fact of the um, besides the fact of the toolbox, I thought um, it would be responsible to place something in this budget for this warrant that recognized, you're all sitting at home um, with your families not working for a reason. And we recognize that. And we know that's going to affect us because it's, it's gotta be running through everybody's mind, I would think. You know, how is the town operating? How will they operate next year? Uh, what will they do if uh, uh, tax commitments don't come in as rapidly as, as possible? Um, or, you know, sure, go ahead.
Talking. Uh, Eric, is this the tool that you need to do your job in the best manner possible? Managing all of these projects, managing this money? Is this what you want?
It is one tool that could effectively um, solve, solve any number of problems that we have. Um, I, I do think um, you know, a, a town meeting um, on floor could be equally successful. I think this is really, I don't wanna say a political decision, uh, but I think that this is just um, I think, I think Bruce is right. This is a proactive approach. Um, that uh, it does give the, the board um, the ability to respond to needs. Um, certainly would give me the ability to recommend to the board that, hey, it's uh, we're, we're looking like we're gonna be 80% down in state revenue or whatever it might be. Um, we need to talk about how we're gonna approach this. It would give us a tool, as Bruce said, right out of the box, uh, which is, which is valuable. Um, so um, I don't wanna advocate for or against, but I think that it, it's a, it's a good tool.
Yeah, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Eric a little bit off the hook on this because um, he's, he is characterizing it as, as in a, in a way that it's, it's a tool, but really, it's, it, it does come down to action policy in terms of how the board will approach emergency. And so it really is our ownership of, of, of this and direction to, to the town.
All right. Well, that feels good. I, I, I feel like we have discussed this and I feel like I, I know where I stand. So thank you.
Okay. Ralph?
One final comment. I like the proactive approach. I think it's better than being reactive. I would just suggest uh, if the board moves forward with this, that we massage the language uh, to the extent that we allow both the budget committee and the select board to take ownership of any action that we might have to take if unforeseen circumstances arise.
I'm gonna speak to that really quickly. Um, if we do that, we need to amend it tonight. Uh, if we're going to put forward separate language. Um, I um, we appoint the budget committee. They do a great job. They're a good representation, I think, of uh, knowledge and um, and, and, and care uh, about our community. But um, I guess I'm willing to put the box stops here on my desk in regards to this. We're the ones that face the voters. Um, and we're the ones who ultimately have to make that decision. Um, I have absolutely no uh, qualms if we were to use this of consulting the budget committee, but writing them into the article um, I think is probably the wrong way to go. And I don't think that would make them necessarily any more comfortable. Uh, I also wanna, I, I, before we finish with this topic, we need to, there, there is a political um, discussion that needs to take place. And that discussion is, are we comfortable with um, are, are we comfortable with having a split decision on the ballot? Um, where the select board recommends one thing and uh, the budget committee recommends another. And I don't know necessarily if they would recommend the other because they haven't voted yet. Um, I'm not sure. I, I mean, they, they've certainly spoken uh, very forthrightly on how they feel about that. Um, I don't know on review of our topic if um, it, it, our, our conversation, if they would feel differently. Uh, I do know one budget committee member is, is here. Um, she wants to talk to us. Um, all she has to do is unmute. Um, and she would be recognized right away. If she doesn't want to, she's listening to gather these information for the, for them as they speak later. That's fine too. Um, anybody wanna speak?
I have just a quick suggestion. Um, I'm wondering, so 25%, we're talking about what, 1.2 million? Is that the correct number that we keep for two-twölths?
That, that's our estimate. Again, we're looking forward a year and a half, two years. That's our estimate, about 1.1, 1.2 million dollars has been the, the average, yeah.
Okay, so if we're looking at 25%, um.
It's around 270,000.
270,000.
Yeah, 278, maybe.
So if we, I'm gonna just throw this out and see what people think. What if we made this 10% instead? Which would make it 120,000 maybe? Um.
Or 15?
115.
15 works.
That may, that may make people much less fearful of the select board running um, away on their own, but it still gives us what you're looking for, which is some flexibility if revenues really tank.
So would I take a three-eighths socket over a seven-eighths socket? Right?
Well.
No, no, uh, no, I understand that. Um, and, and, and so, and so really the argument will become, I shouldn't say argument, but um, the debate would become, you know, you know, more in line, does this align more with being closer to the policy in a way that uh, helps people say, yes, I can live with this? Or um, or, or, or will, will the budget committee say, well, really, you know, we don't wanna see anything uh, on this uh, because it's a, it's a bad practice to start. And again, um, the word emergency is in there and it's very purposefully in there. Um, because I don't expect to be doing this next year. Um, hopefully not. Um, Ralph?
I think we need to do something. Uh, if we don't get budget committee buy-in and it's a, and it's a split situation, so be it. But I think we have to be proactive. I like Catherine and Chris's suggestion that we reduce the uh, the percentage amount, which does to my mind, an important thing in terms of protecting the uh, the undesigned fund balance as well. It may soften the blow in terms of the way the, the select board wants to go. I think we need to do this. Uh, I would favor a 15% number. Uh, we need to have this so that we can act in a timely fashion. Uh, because when you go to a town meeting, your needs may be urgent, but you're not necessarily guaranteed of any outcomes. And again, as Chris has said, uh, you're going to get the most representative voter sentiment at the initial vote. And this would be the way to do it. So I think we need to leave it in and perhaps just adjust the percentage.
Are there any other thoughts on what the percentage ought to be if we adjusted the percentage? Ralph mentioned 15. I heard 10 mentioned, which is a $120,000 approximately. Uh, I'm comfortable with whatever you want to do in regards to this. Dennis?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think at this point, when we're looking at a reduction in, in percentage, whether it's 10% or 15%, when, you know, when the fan is covered, we're gonna have to pay one way or another, right? And so, you know, we, we just talked about this this year and last year with authorizing money for the dam. We don't wanna have to come back and ask for more. So, so if this is a tool, if this is gonna help us move in the most nimble way, then let's not hamstring ourselves by doing 15 or 20%. If the 25 is what's in, if this is a sort of fail break, kind of like a circuit breaker measure anyway, just in case, then I don't wanna nickel and dime it in, in case a big emergency comes up.
So that would um, then take um, would, would, would require me to qualify my 25%. How did I come up with that number? Um, basically, I, the number I was coming up with in my mind is the ability to make about a quarter million dollar move. Um, and I, that's somewhat out of thin air, to be quite honest with you because everything going forward is an, is an unknown. Let me also speak to the two-twölths policy and um, and, and, and our credit rating. Um, I don't wanna take us in any direction that um, harms us. Um, that would take and place us below um, where we feel we need to be or harm our credit rating as a town. But I will say on the other hand, that emergencies are, have a life of their own. Um, I am absolutely sure that tonight in New York City, people are doing things on an emergency basis that they never thought in the middle of their bureaucracy or government role or, or whatever is an alderman or this or that. Um, or a medical person, they'd never thought they would be doing. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from on this. Um, so Dennis, I don't have any real justification for the 25% other than the ability to make a sizable move. And maybe, maybe 100,000 is a good sizable move to make. I don't know. I'm, I'm open to feedback on that.
I will say, Bruce, I think the 25% is a, is a, is a good number uh, if you're looking to get the most, uh, the most out of an approach like this. Uh, Catherine mentioned the fact that uh, in the, we did do the two-twölths in order to maintain um, cash flow. It's a cash flow tool uh, to, to not policy, but it also is a bit of a savings tool and a bit of a buffer in the event of an emergency. Uh, I, I don't see it as being um, just a, a cash flow tool because there is money in there that's above and beyond. Um, and typically, our lowest uh, levels are about 50% of what's in that account. Um, and we, we don't, I don't think last year we dropped below a million dollars. Uh, if we did, it was for a very short period of time. Um, uh, and by just a small amount. Um, so that 50%, um, I mean, 500,000 dollars uh, I don't know, 500, 250,000 dollars, uh, certainly um, it's not gonna be a, a threat to our ability to pay our bills.
Okay.
Short term, long term, it might be an issue. Um, and I guess when I'm sending the million dollar money, I am thinking more about um, the com, combined balance of designated and undesigned funds, but um, from a cash flow perspective, that's what we would be looking at anyway. So um, I think that, that's a fair number. Um.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll never make this move or any of the other revenue cuts um, without a discussion of this depth and magnitude, if not more than one. So, um.
I'd like to motion to approve Article 36 and add it to the warrant as written.
Second.
Do you want to characterize Dennis' select board recommendation on that? Or will we vote, let's take that as a separate vote then. So we've got this article to go in here for, as written, that we will present this new article to voters. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I move that we not approve this. I move, okay. I think we need to strike the motion and the approval for the second because we did not include the words "in total," which we had discussed last week. And that, I think, was just because this had been printed earlier. So Dennis, I'm very happy with what you said. If we include the "in total."
You, you take over. You're the best at this.
Okay, so the word, no, the words "in total" follow the 25%.
Right. That's what we had said last week.
Right. And so the, this was, this was printed actually before that and we had decided to include that. So...
So here, I'll do it for you, Dennis.
Thank you. I need you to.
I move that we, I want to make an amendment to this motion, that we insert the words "in total" after 25%.
Second.
Okay. It moved and seconded to insert the words "in total" after the figure of 25%. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote on the amendment before we vote on the motion. Anno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going as a yes. Now we go to the main motion. So the main motion is as amended with the words "in total" after 25%. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the roll. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
We're going. Woodsum?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. And then we'll move to the select board recommendation on Article 36. So I'll take a motion in reference to the select board recommendation. We didn't include that in the main motion, so we need to do that.
I'll make a motion that the select board recommends ought to pass for Article 36.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Ralph is the second. Is there any discussion on that recommendation? I want to thank the budget committee for their advice on this. We discussed this at great length during this meeting and I appreciate their warning. And I'm very, we very much want to follow the warnings that they've placed in front of us in terms of where to be careful and I appreciate that and as we go forward. So I will go ahead with the roll call unless it's further discussion. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
And we're going as a yes. I'll move on to Articles 37 and 38. I just called these for the sake of argument efficiency. One is about the streetlights and the other one is consolidating our reserve accounts. So we have Articles 37 and 38.
I'll make a motion that we approve Article 37 and 38 as presented and placed on the warrant.
Thank you. A second please. It's been moved and seconded, 37 and 38, to be placed on the warrant as written. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the roll call. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going as a yes. Articles 39 through 50 are the ordinance and one question. So 39 through 50 include the ordinances that we're putting forward, the food sovereignty ordinance, the administrative ordinance, the land use ordinance, the various questions to deal with marijuana and the establishment's ordinance thereof, which is 49. And then 50 is, shall the town continue to use the secret ballot for the 2021?
I just...
Yes, please.
May I point out, the Articles 42 through 48 should in fact, in their language, refer to Article 49.
You're right. So that probably comes from where we inserted 36 in.
Yeah.
God, I missed it.
Okay, buddy, takes a village.
So when we, so when we do that motion, we're going to do that and just state that the motion will cover all of these as 49. So thank you for doing that.
I'll make a motion that we approve Articles 39, 40, 41, and 50. 49 and 50 as written. And Articles 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, and 47.
And 48.
And 48.
And 48, to all have the number 48 replaced with 49. Otherwise, the language is what will be put on the warrant.
Second.
Yeah, I think that covers it. So is there any discussion on 39 and 50 and how we should bring those forward?
I'm thankful that these are on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going as a yes. So we've concluded the old business.
One last thing, Bruce.
Yeah.
Could I ask for the board to vote to accept any changes that may be amended by the town attorney in their final review of this document?
I'll make a motion that the select board will authorize any adjustments or corrections made by the town attorney.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve any adjustments brought forward from a legal basis by the town attorney. I guess my only characterization of that would be if they were of substantial note to bring that back to this board somehow on an emergency basis. For example, if they said we should strike a complete warrant article, I'd want to know that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ralph?
If they don't alter intent, then that's fine.
Yep, that's exactly right. But we want to get, we want to get the wording right.
So should we rephrase that motion?
I say, I think the characterization is correctly understood here. But I want to make sure, is everybody comfortable with the motion or do you want to reword it?
No, it's okay. Eric knows what we, what we need.
Yes.
I do.
Okay, Ralph, are you comfortable with the language?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we have that motion in front of us for the legal review. Was it seconded? It was, right? Correct. Okay, any discussion on that motion? We had it all in tape, oh, excuse me. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going, yes. When is our next meeting, Eric?
Next Monday.
It is next Monday.
I'm not Eric, sorry.
That's right, that's about right. So it's Monday, April 9, right? No.
Today's the 6th and 7th, 13th.
April 13th. Okay, I just wanted to make, note that in public session here. Great, I appreciate everybody. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved to adjourn.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. I guess we do call a roll call on that as well. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodsum?
Yes.
We're going, yes. Everybody stays, everybody stays safe and have a very good night.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
Bye. Bye, everyone.